Okay. They about to.
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is seven thirty. Welcome to all of our board and citizens for being on tonight.
Thank you.
And it is my hope and prayer that we'll make this a productive meeting. We begin our meeting now, I call the meeting to order. Roll call vote, Madam Craig.
Okay, good evening. Alderwoman West.
President.
Alderwoman Chapman.
Yeah.
Alderwoman Reed.
Present.
Alderman Carroll.
Present.
Alderman Thomas.
Present.
Alderman Christian.
Here.
Alderwoman Dale's. Alderwoman Avon Elliott.
Present.
And then I see City Attorney Dorothy White Coleman, yes, I see her.
Yes.
Okay, Police Chief Eiler is here, I think. And I'm the city clerk and the mayor is here and the city collector is here. Mayor, everyone's here.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda. Either my, my speakers turn down low or you, I'm barely hearing people.
Check the chat for the hands, you got two hands.
Dinah Chapman's hand is up.
Okay. Alderwoman Chapman.
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
To amend the agenda to
To remove resolutions twenty twenty dash nine and bill number twenty five ninety nine.
Uh, okay.
Under new business.
New business, all right, is there, is there, is there seconds?
Alderman Thomas, I have second.
Yeah, Alderman Thomas, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Rock, all in favor say aye.
A point of information, Mayor.
All right, what's your point?
You allowing for amendments this time to the agenda?
Not to amend the agenda, but to place something on new business.
To remove. No, that's not what she asked.
Well, she said to be placed on the, on the, on the agenda, on the new business.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor, I stated.
I can barely hear you guys for some reason.
It should be placed in the chat.
I'm here, I can put it in the chat. Can everybody see it?
Well, I don't.
Not yet, you haven't, you need to press enter, I think.
Okay. Okay, so as I move to remove item C and D resolutions, twenty twenty dash nine and bill number twenty five ninety nine, what are those?
Under new business.
Okay. Oh, you, okay. These are a resolution and bill number twenty five ninety nine?
Yes, sir.
And what is your most, your motion, I move to, I move to remove items C and D resolutions and blah, blah, blah. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, call or roll.
Discussion.
It's for discussion.
In discussion, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, um, Mayor, my, I'm gonna raise my hand.
I, I, I see you go, go right ahead.
I think Alderwoman West's hand up was up first.
Uh, all right, Alderwoman West.
It's actually Alderman Carroll, and I, I, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just pointing this out. This is where the discrepancies, where certain board members are allowed to amend the agenda. And it's put forth, there was no objection to that agenda or that, or that motion was not. Typically, when, when myself or Alderwoman Avon Elliott tries to amend the agenda, it's either we're given the explanation that that motion's not recognized or the motion's out of order. But again, tonight, certain other people are being allowed to amend the agenda. And I, as I said, I'm just pointing out the inconsistencies that, that as chair you, you engage in, and that's all my, that's all I have.
Alderwoman Elliott.
Yes, I was just interest, interested in the reason for the removal, the explanation for the removal.
Well, what I'm gonna do, I'm sorry. Mayor, may I?
Yes, go right here.
What I'm gonna do is rescind my motion. And I concur with Alderwoman Carroll that we did state because of the sunshine law that any amendment not be made to the agenda at this place. So I will rescind my motion.
Um, Mayor, a point of clarification. It can be made, but you typically, you typically as the chair do not honor it. So it's a violation on your part, but it is allowed to make amendment. So she's within her right to do it, you just don't honor it when I make a motion for the agenda to be amended, that's the point that he's making. So if you, if you would like to keep it on there, you're in your right, but he is inconsistent in honoring those motions when it's, you know, when he should be honoring it, that's the point he was making.
Okay, well.
Alderman Thomas.
I was just gonna say that even if the motion is made, there's, there's still a vote. So. And that was my point.
Okay. Well, may I answer Alderwoman Elliott's question as to why?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm deeply concerned that with the resolutions that's being put forth that I've read in its entirety, that we're moving forward to censure a colleague without giving them an opportunity to face their accuser without having any documentation of proof of said allegation. And I think to be fair and given foregiven honesty that something of this severity that a person gets, they're given an opportunity, number one, to defend themselves, number two, to face their accusers and to have documentation that would support such grievances. That's why it's a vacuum. For D, there's a contract to hire legal counsel. I'm concerned because we already have a contract with legal counsel which has not been terminated. And according to statute that we have, state statute seventy nine point two four oh, that contract can only be terminated with two thirds vote, and we haven't gone through that procedure in order to terminate one contract before we enter into another. So that was my purpose for vote.
So are you rescinding your motion?
No, sir, this is allowed and we're gonna try to have a decorum and be consistent. I, I want to keep my motion on the floor, please. And I wanted to answer my colleague's question, she wanted to know why.
Mayor.
I guess one second.
Okay.
Alderwoman Elliott.
Yes, I'm just entering my comment for debate. When we held the meeting, although all the members were not a part of the committees, they were present. And with them being present, the artifacts were referenced that were received around the allegations. And there's other artifacts that are available that was discussed at that meeting concerning the conduct. And if, if she wants to provide some type of statement, you know, during the meeting or after the meeting, but there has been artifacts that support what was discussed. And secondly, both the attorney, the municipal league has both referenced the need for a consultant attorney, which is what the ordinance is for. We voted to have that person, but we had not developed the ordinance for it. So this is the consultant attorney that we voted for. And to answer the question about the August the twelfth meeting, the attorney herself would have to go to court to debate the decision that was made that particular night.
Alderman Thomas. You're muted.
You're muted.
I'm sorry, I thought we were going to discuss this when we got to the, to that part of the agenda. But it is very unfair for this resolution against our fellow alderperson to be injected because she, no investigation has been until. I don't know, I'm not sure who wrote this resolution. But I don't believe all the facts have been investigated concerning this. Yes, we did discuss it, but there was no investigation. And as far as the attorney, we have a contract with our current attorney. And yes, it was suggested that we go and we, that we seek outside counsel. But that duty is up to the, to our chair, the mayor. That's all I have.
Alderwoman Chapman, let's wrap this up and either we, we gonna, we gonna keep it on. And just to address Alderman Carroll's suggests that I'm not fair. Alderwoman Chapman was not adding to the agenda. Those things that I objected to were add-ons to the agenda, not deletions. Alderman Chapman, proceed.
No, sir, I just put forth the motion, I have no further discussions.
All right, is it, has been moved and seconded? Who seconded?
Alderman Thomas seconded.
All right, call or roll, Nadia.
Alderwoman. Excuse me, point of order, we're voting on the amendment right now, we're not actually voting on the agenda. So we're, we're voting on to remove item C and D right now. And then if this passes or fails, then we go on and move to approve the agenda.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, Alderwoman Avon Elliott.
No.
Alderwoman West.
Show my video.
I'm sorry.
I want to show my video since we roll call a no.
Oh, okay, Alderwoman West.
No.
Alderwoman Dale's.
Yes.
Alderwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Alderman Christian.
No.
Alderwoman Reed.
No.
Alderman Thomas.
Yes.
Alderman Chris, Carroll.
No.
You have five no's and three yes, Mayor.
All right, motion fails. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Wait just one second and I'll call you. Alderwoman Reed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Carroll seconds.
I'm sorry, Alderman Carroll or West or whoever it is.
Carroll, I second.
Okay, then. Is there any further discussion? Madam Craig, will you call and roll, please?
Excuse me, I have a question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, this, this question's for Fran, and I was wondering, I, I sent an email about this. I was just wondering how all the persons are assigned to read ordinances or resolutions. Is there a process to that that you could explain or? Or is that not, or am I asking the wrong person?
Well, they're assigned. Just in your email that you sent, you were correct. If a person present the ordinance, then they, I mean, if they, you know, presented, then they are the person that read it.
Right.
The ones that were on for tonight, these, these two resolutions, number oh seven and oh eight, this is the second or third time that they were presented. And the first time they were presented, I did call around to find out who wanted to present it. So they were both put on Mr. Thomas because he was the only person that wanted to present them.
Then. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not disputing that, I'm just, I'm just curious about the, the process, I'm not, I'm not.
The process is exactly as you stated in your email. If a person bring it up, then they present it.
Gotcha, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Alderwoman, well, Alderwoman Dale's, did you have a statement, you have something you want to say?
I do have a question, I would like to know, um, I'll put it in. I would like to know what, what attorney wrote resolution twenty twenty oh nine.
I mean, I can't answer that. Is anyone who can answer that? Apparently, no one is available to answer that question.
So we have, wait, wait, wait.
Make one.
I, I'm not, okay, so we have this resolution, no one seems to know who, who wrote it. The first time I find out about it is when I was handed the documents and of, of, all the people, the five other people have no answer for anything.
Well, that's, let me suggest that we ask those questions when we get to this resolution.
Okay, okay.
Right now, we're in the midst of a roll call to approve the agenda, would you call the roll, Madam Craig?
Alderwoman West.
I'm sorry.
We're approving the agenda, okay, Alderwoman Chapman.
No.
Alderwoman Reed.
Yes.
Alderman Carroll.
Yes.
Alderman Thomas.
No.
Alderman Christian.
Yes.
Alderman, Alderwoman Dale's.
No.
Alderwoman Avon Elliott.
Yes.
We have five yes and three no's, Mayor.
All righty. At this time, we will wait, will approval of unapproved minutes, board minutes, minutes from ten fifteen twenty twenty. Oh, I'm sorry, somebody got the handles on.
Mr. Anthony Green.
Good times.
Alderman Thomas.
I make a motion that the minutes from October fifteenth twenty twenty be accepted as read.
Alder, well, Alderman West, I guess, Alderman.
Carroll seconds.
Okay, I've been moving and properly second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Composers nay. As have it, so on it. This time, we will meet us over to the public with three minute time limit. There's someone from the public would like to speak at this time.
This is Wanda Lane, I'm sorry, was someone else about to speak?
Go, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead. Hello?
Yes, go, go right ahead.
Oh, okay. Again, Mayor, head to shine, I know that we have a time limit on our meeting. But there's no one else wants to speak, and there's several people online. I'd like to express my total disappointment again with my board that we citizens voted to hold these seats. That was just a waste of time. Regarding, I was looking through the sunshine law book, and I was trying to find the section. You are the, the chair, or any kind of, of adjustment can be made as long as it is, as long as it is put under newer bit, new business to be discussed at a future meeting. So I think that the issue that, that the other alderpeople have bring up is because they wanted to put a whole lot of stuff on the agenda, which you have the right to approve or not approve that. Regarding, I, I know that Alderwoman Dale's is going to address this resolution. But I'd like to ask the chief, when he gives his report, was he anywhere involved? Since it was his, his officer? What were the particulars about that? And regarding your expertise and litig, and questioning, were you at all participating in this process? I'd like to know that, when you give your, when you give your report. Regarding the city attorney, I read everything about that. And the contract, the very last paragraph said something about this contract supersedes any other contract. Well, that means it supersedes the contract that we currently have. That's number one. Number two, the reference that Avon Elliott made regarding the suggestion from the municipal league, had she been in attendance and maybe if she just listened to the recording? The executive director was speaking to us, and that statement came right after he said there are a lot of illegal activities that members of your board are involved in. I am not an attorney, you all need to seek counsel. And it was directed toward the mayor and everybody else who was in the room. That's how that actually happened. Regarding, and or if you want to say it had to do with the, the formation that you all decided to do on this August twelfth meeting, that too was illegal as well. I had a, and a forty-five minute conversation with the state, with the attorney general's office regarding that meeting. I've received correspondence from the attorney general's office regarding that meeting. I was given an example of what an emergency special meeting for cause would be like. And based on what I observed, based on what's written, none of what happened at that September twelfth meeting would fit into the category as it was explained to me as an emergency special meeting. Therefore, everything that happened in that meeting was ZRO, just not, not, not valid at all. Finally, Mayor, but the most important thing is there are, there are members of the board who are operating out of their boundary.
Oh, Mayor, please. Of order.
Okay, Mayor, I'll wrap it up in two minutes.
I call for a point of order.
Mayor, I'll wrap it up in two minutes, I promise.
No, you will not, your time, your three minutes are up.
Alderwoman West.
Her three minutes are up, I've been timing.
Alderwoman West, you are order.
No, you and Wanda Lane, Mayor Lane is out of order. Mayor Attorney, State Rep, Alderwoman, Wanda Lane is out of order. She has been talking beyond her three minutes. And every time this happens, you allow her to do this. And it is on your part out of order. You cannot continuously make assumptions, okay, then we won't have a meeting tonight. Because I'll keep on talking, I will keep on talking. And if you cut me off, I'll call back in on the telephone, or I'll call some other people and have them do the same thing now. What she can't do is wait until the end of the meeting and continue with her comments, that's what she can do.
We were not able to have public comments at the second half.
Well, but that's too bad, Wanda Lane.
I hear you.
You do not run for mayor, you're down to neighbors in spite of what you think.
Mayor, we were at the last meeting, the meeting ended without the public, without the public being able to express their opinion. So I'm asking for
You are the councilman, you are everything besides Wanda Lane, Jane Q citizen. You know everything about everything, you need to run for mayor, you need to run for something. That's, or you need to be in contract with the attorney because you know more than the attorney does.
Final order, please, Mayor, may we move on to the next to the next, because what we're doing right now is disruptive.
Right.
Yes, she is very disruptive, and so is the mayor.
If we can move on to the next citizen.
Y'all need to stop this mess.
I would ask that you would please allow us to move on and come back on.
Allow us, really? Allow us.
Yes.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman Chapman, I, I hear you, and I will.
And I will.
Thank you. It's my decorum on how I wish to address a citizen, and yes, I did.
Oh, yes, yes, Reverend.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Reverend.
Citizen Lane, there's another spot at the end, let me see.
It's the
It is.
Well, I don't, ma'am, my question is.
No, you will not continue, Wanda Lane, this will not happen.
My question, ma'am, is, will this meeting end?
So you keep on talking to the mayor, and I'll keep on talking, yes, I would be rude, I would be all of that. Whatever you choose to call me, Wanda Lane, here, attorney, councilwoman, whatever.
Is there anyone?
But you don't stop this.
Like to make a anyone from the public would like to speak?
Yes, this is Kathy Mason, I live at ten thirty down now. I'd like, I'd like to thank Alderwoman Elise Daley and Joe Raven. And, I'm sorry, did I do it?
Go right here.
And Sammy, forget my lights turned back on in front of my house. And I'd like to tell whoever is listening that if you have a problem with your light, call City Attorney's Building Department, not the Ameren Hui, because Ameren doesn't do anything. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to speak?
Uh, it's Anthony Green, uh, from, uh, nine two two eight Wardoff. Um, I just wanted to, I guess, thank the building department. They're working on, looks like Newby Street. Uh, they're, I know we talked about that in prior meetings or at least I made a concern about Newby. So I think they've done some, some more road work in that area and I, uh, thank you for that. Um, and, uh, I guess my other concern just is just really to, uh, reiterate what the other citizens said, uh, it looks like a lot of the lighting has been restored, I guess, for the street lighting for various streets in the area. Um, I don't know if we've used better bulbs. It just seems like some of the, the lights are very much brighter now. I don't know what's the difference between the last time, like a month, um, two, two or three months ago and now, but the lights look like they're actually better illuminated. Um, I guess there's been some change out of the bulbs that, that has helped as well in terms of safety. Um, my other last concern is just, um, and I think it's really a combination of various cities, but there's a lot of, there's a big actually two issues. One is speeding. I would love to hear what our metrics are about speeding in the area from the police department. I, I, I don't want to prioritize it over crime, true, true crime, but I would love to hear what metrics we have going on for speeding. Um, and then also littering and trash in the area. It seems to be a big issue for that. Are we, what kind of marketing to the people, the citizens, are we doing about that as well? Some more questions about that. That's my only items I have is the litter and the speeding, um, kind of getting some feedback from the police department, more specifically on speeding. But do we have some kind of broad initiative about the amount of litter that's kind of building up in, in various parts of Bell Fountain Neighbors? Thank you very much. That's it. Bye bye.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is anyone else from the public who would like to speak?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
This is Peg Warnes. Um, I'd like to talk for a minute about the barrier that is at Crete and, um, Cabot. I'm sorry, my address is one zero zero three zero Crete Drive. Um, right, the, the barrier there is not complete. And there's been some confusion, I think, about some people telling other people what they're supposed to do and whatever. So I'm going to come directly to you. The street department needs to come in and install a baller so that cars cannot go around the barrier and through my neighbor's yard. And the Ballard and all of the materials that the, um, street department needs to, to have, they have them at their office or in their room. All they have to do is just put this on the calendar and get the job done. Um, I, it's, otherwise the barrier is just fine, but cars continue to run over his lawn to go around the barrier, which defeats the whole purpose of the barrier. So if you could do that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. If there's no one else, then we'll, we'll bring the meeting back. Uh, commission and boards, uh, board reports, uh, Public Safety Committee.
No court at the last meeting, so there's no minutes.
Okay. Youth Commission.
Um, no report was included in the packet. Fran, did you get a report for the youth commission?
No, I did not.
Okay.
Image and beautification.
I have nothing to report on for INB at the moment.
Yeah. Parks and Recreation Board.
I got a que- I got a question about that, um, image and beautification, Mayor.
Correct.
Regarding that, um, I was looking at, um, all the commissions and, and the duties that, that they're responsible for. And in our ordinance, in the, in the code that's on the website, and I guess this would be directed to Fran, I don't know. But there's not, there's an ordinance for the image and beautification, um, commission, but it's not listed in our, our, on the website, the, the code on the website. So is there a reason why or, or could you give an explanation or someone give an explanation as to, to that?
What, what are you not, what you need an explanation for?
Um, so like if you go look in, uh, on the, the website, under the municipal, our, our municipal code there, under chapter two administration, it lists out, um, all the, the, the city's commissions, like the youth commission, the planning and zoning, um.
So you're saying the image and beautification is not listed in that area?
No, there's not. There, it's not li- I couldn't find it in the, in, in that, on, in that code. But when I put it in the, the phrase image and beautification, an ordinance came up that was passed back in nineteen ninety-eight, um, establishing the image and beautification commission, but it's not on the website. And I was just wondering what that whole, um, process or, or what the discrepancy is, is with that.
Okay. Well, I'm really not aware of that, uh, Autumn and Carol, but I can check into it and see what's going on because you know, that was put together, as you said, in nineteen ninety-eight. So
Right, right.
I'm writing myself a note to see, I'll look at it and see what you're talking about. I really.
And I'll give you, it's ordinance number one seven 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 that establishes, establishes the image and beautification commission. And it lists, um, like the, the duties and the, the, um, uh, salary or whatever you want to call it, stipend that they receive. But, um, like I said, it's not actually in the, the code online.
Okay, I, I really don't know, but I can check on it tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I'm sorry, what was your finding? Where are we? Uh, I mean, uh, where are we?
Mayor, we're at D Parks and Rec Board.
All right. Park and Rec Board Reports.
Hi, everybody. Um, it's Martha. Uh, you all have the minutes and I don't really have anything further to add. I don't want to delay the meeting. So unless you have any questions for us, it's been kind of quiet at the rec center lately. Um, it's really all I have for tonight.
Okay.
May I have a question for Amy or Martha?
Yes.
Are you all still taking temperatures?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Mm-hmm.
Old woman, uh, Wes or Carol?
It's all the woman West. Um, Martha, my question is, um, there is a young lady who has, um, partnered with Toys for Tots and she's going to need a room, uh, in December to dispense those toys. And so I'm asking you along with the board at this time to, um, give us permission to use a room at the rec center. And I'll have to get with you, um, on the date of distribution, uh, later. But right now I'm asking for permission from the board as well as you, Martha, uh, to do that.
Um, that is fine with me as long as it's not on a Sunday when we are closed. I'll check with Amy and refer that to her. But as long as the board approves that, um, that, that is fine with us if they want to use a room.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
It's time then.
All women Chapman. All women Chapman, your hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry. No.
Uh, all women Elliott.
Just go and ignore me.
Um, I think all the woman Wes was still speaking, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just asked, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
Uh, yes, I was. Thank you. I was going to, uh, ask now for permission to, uh, I moved to reserve a room at the rec center to.
I'm sorry, but you have to put that on the new business. Um, you have to put that on the new business.
Why is that?
Because you can't interject a motion that is not on the agenda and have it voted on.
Okay, I'm going to accept that because I don't want to keep arguing. Thank you.
All women Elliott.
Um, two things, um, the, um, I don't know if, um, the rec center is aware that they still have, um, Black History Month. I think I went out on the call. I might've had technology difficulties, but I believe that Black History will not be taking place, um, in February this year, if you have it on your literature somewhere. Um, uh, and at this time I would like to make a motion to put the approval of, um, the, uh, rooms, room designation on the next agenda under new business.
Okay.
Toys for Tots.
Um.
I will make a.
All read. All woman read.
Uh, go, go ahead, Martha. I think you were talking though before. Oh, I, she, she, oh, my motion. So somebody.
There's a point of order. Uh, all the, all the woman Avon Elliott's made a, um, um, a motion. So we need to.
Second.
That's that. I believe that.
Right. And we understand that. Uh, and so I was assuming that all woman Reed was going to second their motion. Uh, hand is up.
No, I actually wasn't, but I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay. Are there any further discussion?
I, I think Martha was saying something to it, Mayor. Um, I think Martha was still commenting on something.
I'm sorry. Go right ahead, Martha.
I was just saying that in reference to the Black History Month, um, that we will take away all the notification of it that we can, like off the signboard if you'd like. Um, you know, as long as it's not in print, it's already out. I'll talk to Amy about that and make sure.
When is the next, um, newsletter due?
I would have to check with Amy.
Okay.
About that.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Any further discussion? Uh, all, all woman Diaz.
Yes, uh, Mayor, um, the Black History Committee, uh, just met last week and we'll be sending out notification. I stated in my last comment, um, last meeting that we have, we are moving the Black History Celebration to June King, in June. But we, once we continue on with, um, our planning, we'll give the board and the rec center more information.
I, uh, Mayor, I had went out on that meeting, um, like my technology messed up. Did the board approve the change? I wasn't, did the board approve the change in events?
The change in what even, I'm sorry.
From Black History to Juneteenth.
I don't know.
The board, the, I, I, I can, I can answer that, Mayor.
Correct.
The board has never interfered with any type of event since I've been on the board. And we do, we do, we do have an inclement weather date and because we're dealing with COVID, we cannot be in the inside. So after we continue, the group continues to meet and we put our date up for Juneteenth, we will notify the board and the rec center.
Um, since I've been on the board, we, we have approved, um, uh, events that were budget line items. So is this.
Mayor, point of order.
A budget line item? I'm just curious.
Point of order, Mayor.
What's your point of order?
The motion is to place the, uh, room approval on the next agenda. Now we're, we're starting to talk about Black History and, and all of that. So can we go on with, uh, any further discussion on this motion and, and a vote?
Thank you.
Well, your point of order is well taken. So, um, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Uh, are there any opposeds? As have it, so ordered. Uh.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I had initially had my hand up for, like, thank you. Um, I had two questions. Uh, Martha had mentioned that the rec center is closed on Sundays. Um, I didn't know that. I thought the rec center was open on Sundays.
We used to be open on Sundays, but when COVID hit, we did not open mainly because we're not allowed to have room reservations and it's just not cost effective, um, to be paying employees when we can't even reserve rooms when the participation for everything else is down. So we decided to not open on Sundays until at least the guidelines have been lifted through the county that we can start reserving rooms more regularly. It, it's just not cost effective and also we're, we don't have enough staff to cover the whole weekend as well.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't know that. Um, so that, that's just good to know. Um, I didn't see it anywhere that we were closed on Sundays. Um, and also, um, about the, the room, are we asking about the room? So it is of, of no cost for the Toys for Tots event? Uh, I guess that's really with older woman Wes. I just wanted to understand. I know it'll be on our next time.
Uh, right, at no cost.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. All right. We'll move down now to, uh, planning and zoning.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
Uh, planning and zoning will hold an in-person meeting on Monday, November ninth at City Hall. Masks will be required and the social distancing will be practiced. Topics to be included will be a review of a proposed change at, uh, ninety-two sixty-six Lewis and Clark. That's the old Regions drive-through bank. If the application, if the applicant is present and also to discuss a preliminary food truck ordinance. A hearing for a proposed in-home childcare at ninety-nine sixty-one North Hampton will take place at the next board meeting on Thursday, the nineteenth. Um, this is not planning and zoning, but if the mayor would allow me, I'd like to speak a little bit how we might be able to make repairs to our outdoor pool using funds that we already have budgeted for it.
Go right here.
Thank you.
You may.
Um, as everybody knows, we weren't able to open our outdoor pool this year because, uh, it needs some pretty substantial repairs. Uh, it has a Pebble Tech plaster interior finish that has reached the end of its useful life and patching it like we used to do in the past, uh, is, isn't practical anymore. Uh, parts of the interior finish are coming off the concrete shell in pretty large pieces. Uh, also the VGB drains in the deep end of the lap pool are elevated to where the last three inches or so of water does not drain out of them. Uh, those drains were retrofitted years ago to the pool uh, to be in compliance with, uh, the Virginia Graham Baker Act of two thousand eight. Saint Louis Department of Health would like us to, uh, uh, make those better than what they are right now. Um, a good deal of investigation was done over the summer about resurfacing methods for pools. We discussed with various material vendors and specialty contractors. We discussed with the city of Florissant, how they handle their pool resurfacing. And again, with Erica Murphy with Saint Louis County Department of Health, uh, we were able to obtain some credible bids and estimations indicating the repairs sufficient for reopening. Uh, can be performed with the a hundred and fifty thousand dollars already budgeted for this work. It doesn't appear that grant funds will be needed to reopen the pool and return it to service next year, twenty twenty-one. Um, this work, should we go forward, uh, will uncover concealed damage. Um, so much of the work is to prep the interior of the pool for a new finish. And there's areas that we just can't see through yet and, uh, there's going to be some discovery. A significant portion of the total project cost has been estimated conservatively to address and repair the concealed damage. There is a possibility it could be in excess of our estimates and, and, uh, budget. But by comments by con- contractors we spoke with and who have visited the site, exceeding our budget seems to be a low probability. Again, this is based on comments by people whose business is pool restoration. Um, we're suggesting that we issue updated requests for quotes, RFQs to the three contractors. to the three contractors we spoke with. Have all bids sent to the city clerk. She can open and record them and then forward them to the city engineer for his review and analysis. Uh, they are technical in nature. Comparing apples to apples will take a, a little bit of time. Once that done, he can present his recommendations to the board and vote, vote on the matter to either accept or reject the recommendations. And in doing so in this way, we would be complying with section two dash two fifty-six of city code, which is purchasing procedures on items over ten thousand dollars. Since the work is technical in nature, section two dash two fifty-seven having to do with sole source, specialized and non-standard items, that would also apply. Reason for stating this to everyone is, uh, this is going to take some time. It's going to take some effort. And, um, I believe that most, if not all, people including those on the board would be for this. But if there's any objections to this, rather than spend more time on this, I it would be helpful to know now. Going forward in this way be acceptable.
Okay. Are there any response? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, McCarroll. Oh, McCarroll, is that you?
That ain't me. I ain't got nobody back here screaming.
Okay, well, all woman Wes.
No, it's me. I'm, I'm, I thought you were referring to the background noise. No, I, I would be in favor of this, but I would, uh, prefer to have the bids open during the board meetings in public, so everybody could, uh, witness, participate, whatever you want to call it, um, in that process.
Okay. All right, um, all woman Reed.
Um, I was gonna make a most motion for, um, to have determined, uh, planning and zoning to move forward with the, uh, bid process for the pools.
Well, we're not, we're not to, we're not to motion that at, at the next meeting. Now, you can, you can, uh, you know, kind of do something about common consent because that pool is going to have to be dealt with. And, and we don't want to.
Saying for him, I'm saying for him to move forward with what he just said.
Okay, just, just, uh, just don't object.
No, no, I said motion for him, for him to proceed. He said, he said how I want to know before I go forward, how the majority of the board feels. So what he said sounds good to me. So I wanted to vote on it with the rest of the board to see if that's how everyone feels. Does that make sense?
Well, it makes sense, but what I'm saying is, is that we're not putting motions on, on the floor that was not put on there in advance. They go on.
Okay, so then I, I, I can motion to have this on the next agenda, right?
Would you let me, would you let me finish?
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, you put it on new, on a new business and it goes on the next agenda. Is how that should be handled. But, uh, I'm sure there are no objections for them to continue uh, to move forward as they are. I'm, I'm just, I'm just not sure, but we don't want to, we don't want to do a motion tonight on that. It goes on a new business and it'll be on their agenda for the next board meeting. And we will proceed.
Okay, so for a point of clarity, so does the city clerk already know to put that on new business for the next meeting? Cause there's nothing we as the board have to do but to say, go ahead at this point. But how do we get her to put it on the agenda then? Do we do it now via a motion or does she just do it?
Now, we'll just, we'll just put the project and, and on the agenda for next month.
Okay, okay.
Uh, all woman Elliot.
Yes, for a point of clarification, as the purchasing director, are you approving that he moved forward? Because that's the part that you are responsible for. We don't have to vote on the part that you're responsible for. So the, the ordinance says that the city administrator does the RFP and RFQ. So if you are getting assistance from someone to do that, is that what you are saying you're doing? You're getting assistance from someone to facilitate that process?
Well, what I'm doing is working with, uh, the department has to move forward. And, uh, when it comes down to approval of, uh, of monies and that kind of thing, then the board will bring that to the board and for the board to approve.
Okay, so then that will be the proper process. So as long as this is within the budget. Um, but I did, I would be asking you later in your mayor's report about the community, um, development block grant that was also, um, supposed to be targeted, uh, for that use. So, um, if you are doing your part, then when it comes to us, then we'll be ready to approve it based on how the, the B is supposed to be open, um, per outwardness in the last meeting we had.
All right, that sounds good to me. All woman, all woman Elliot, I'm sorry, all woman Dales.
Mayor, I'd like to know before we move on to, um, approval of invoices over five hundred, um, the youth commission chair would like to know if she can be, if she can speak.
Okay.
Hello.
Would you wait one minute for me, please? Uh, Pat, does that end your, your report?
It, it does, and, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Sure. All right, then we'll go back to the youth, uh, youth commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. Good evening. I just wanted to, uh, let everyone know that the youth commission did not meet last month, so there is no report to report, which was given to the city clerk. Um, we did not meet due to, uh, several different members being under the weather. We plan to meet next month. Schedule time, same day. Third Monday of every Monday. Seven P M.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Approval of invoices over five hundred. All woman, uh, Dales.
I apologize, Mayor. I don't have my hand up for that. I'm sorry.
Okay. Approval of invoices over five hundred. I see no hand up, so somebody need to. Uh, all the woman Wes, uh, Alderman Carroll. You're muted.
I'm, I'm typing in the motion right now.
Go right here.
I move to approve the invoices over five hundred.
Is there a second?
Christian second.
Any further discussion? Uh, Colorado.
All the woman West.
Yes.
All the woman Reed. Reed.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't get any, so I have same.
Keep calling roll.
All the woman tap. Alderman Carroll. Alderman Christian.
Yes.
All the woman Avon Elliot.
Um, yes.
All the woman Dales.
Yes.
Alderman Thomas.
Yes.
Oh, yes, and one Epstein, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Uh, chief's report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I am going to begin with the, um, first two inquiries from the public, uh, open at the beginning. Um, I wanted to start off with, uh, Mr. Green's question about uh, metrics and, uh, driving behavior. The metrics truly used in, um, measuring your driving behavior is actually measuring what motorists do when the police are present. Um, so it's not tickets, it's not the number of accidents, and it's not the number of stops. The, the best thing for measuring in terms of metrics if, um, you know, to determine how successful the police have been in, uh, during, uh, motors contact campaigns would be like a, um, traffic speed timing system. Uh, they make, uh, pneumatic road cable systems. It's two cables set far apart and measures the time it takes to vehicle to travel, the distance between those two cables. Um, so basically, the, the mathematical formula is uh, distance traveled between the two cables, how much time it takes equals the vehicle's speed. Unfortunately, we, uh, and then the city in general do not have equipment like that. However, I can tell you this, um, motorists contacts have increased exponentially. I do not have numbers before me. Uh, they will be in my, uh, report when, uh, it is provided at the, at the following meeting. And just to remind everybody, all of our motorists contacts are made for probable cause. And, um, the merits of the traffic stop are managed based on those merits only. Um, to address, there was, uh, another question, uh, concerning um, investigations. I, I was not involved anything, uh, to do with resolution number twenty twenty dash oh nine. Um, but as a police chief and, uh, being a police officer for twenty-five years, are, we, we have an investigations policy, just to give everyone kind of an overview of how investigations on our end are conducted. If we receive a complaint from, we'll just do individuals, not use titles or anything. If we could receive a complaint concerning an employee or someone that I have scope of control over, we conduct an internal investigation. Now, depending on the degree, the severity of the complaint, uh, let's say it's pretty serious. Um, you know, we conduct, um, um, recorded interviews, we take written statements, we collect evidence. It's almost like investigating a crime. Uh, we put it together as a package and then, um, the, the internal affairs investigator writes a written summary, presents it to me. It's a fact-finding mission to determine, uh, for me to read and determine whether or not the complaint, uh, can be sustained. Um, it is not sustained, uh, whether or not it, it did occur or not. So there's, uh, quite a few dispositions, uh, that it could result in, but it's all based on that fact-finding mission. And, uh, if it's true, and then it goes into, you know, what remedies are sought and implemented after that. Um, but that's how we conduct ours. It's, it's extremely thorough. If anyone's been, uh, following, um, Saint Louis County, um, and their council and what they've been doing recently back in see the date of the document I have is October twenty-second. I received, um, some correspondence from the Saint Louis County Council. They had passed Saint Louis County Resolution Number six-six-one-four that they adopted on October nineteenth. Uh, the resolution in short, um, addresses hiring practices in police departments. Uh, the resolution closes with that, uh, this, uh, the document would be sent to law enforcement leadership across uh, the Saint Louis, uh, County area municipal departments, mind you. And in an effort to, uh, encourage us to adopt, uh, these policies within our police department. Two things. Um, our police department has been certified since two thousand six. Our hiring practices far exceed what their resolution, uh, actually requests us to do. For commissioned police officers, uh, there's a written aptitude test. There are a, there is a police and a community oral panel interview. Uh, there is a thorough background investigation. There is an interview with the mayor and I separately. Uh, then if we decide, if the mayor decides to further uh, that person candidate in the process, uh, give a conditional offer of employment. At that point, um, they are notified of what they need to complete to, um, receive the job in full, and that's psychological, medical evaluations and to include drug screening and a physical ability assessment. Uh, we do something similar for civilian hiring process. Um, it's like the police, we require an application and a resume. Uh, if I didn't mention that before, um, we do an interview with police department staff. We do a thorough background investigation. It's not just a fingerprint background search. We go knocking on doors and, uh, researching people's history because they're going to be handling, uh, confidential information. Uh, there's an interview with the mayor and I separately. And then if, um, the mayor agrees to further that person in the process, they are given a conditional offer of employment. And, uh, they just need to complete a, uh, employment drug screening, uh, at that point. So we do have thorough processes that we do use when hiring police department employees. The CARES Act Municipal Release Program. Um, I had mentioned in a previous meeting that everything had been turned in concerning phase one and any, uh, supplements to phase one had been completed by, I believe, October sixteenth. Uh, is the, is the treasurer present, uh, for this meeting this evening?
The treasurer is not here.
I don't know, I don't know if he said, but I can tell you, we received the first half today.
Oh, you did receive it today? Okay, uh, you must, that's good because, um, my inquiry, I was actually with you, Mayor. My inquiry at the time, we had not received it, so it has been deposited the first fifty percent. Okay, that's good. So I need not explain any further on that. The board and the public has heard me talk off and on about CGS, the Criminal Justice Information Service. Uh, it's a federal program mandated, uh, by anybody handling law enforcement information specifically. Uh, law, uh, the police and the courts. Uh, we have our annual audit coming up on December third, and some of the things that they look at is the physical security of our building, you know, are, do we have door codes? Uh, do we limit access to important areas where confidential information is stored? Um, they inspect PC terminal maintenance. Um, they look at the CGS file uh, validations for employees, so they have to sign off on a CGS, um, form every year. Basically to agreeing to the terms of the CGS agreement. And they also do an, they do a spot inspection of our confidential records management and maintenance systems to make sure that we are, um, taking care of information properly per their standards. The last couple of things I'm going to close with. And this, uh, first item, uh, was just received today, so there was no chance to get it on the agenda. The the backup battery for the server for City Hall and the police department for, so for that entire building. According to IT, it is beginning to fail. Uh, we've sent out, um, actually, I'm sorry, I received this yesterday. We sent out three quotes, um, in quote, three quote inquiries to three different companies for a replacement. Two of which did not respond, which I was surprised. These are large companies. Um, one did respond with a price of nine hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. I'm going to try to get two other quotes, but I will be submitting this uh, for consideration during the next board meeting. That, that would be an expense that would come out of the Regis Admin, um, city account. Um, number two, I'll be submitting a request for approval of funds in the amount of one thousand six hundred and ten dollars, uh, for CPR and AED. And, um, first responder, first aid training, we, uh, the. We, uh, the Police Department, um, recertifies in this program every two years. There are no other providers that we could find, um, as of the time that we requested this. One, one trainer, uh, was injured, and the other company is no longer existing, so, and we couldn't find anybody beyond that. But I did a comparison the last two years. Uh, I've said the last several years, in 2018, we paid $1,788, and in 2016, we paid $1,472, or $472. So the price presented for this, which I'll submit at the next meeting, um, $1,610 is the median price actually between the two over the last four years. Aside from that, uh, are there any questions? Uh, thank you, Mayor, that is my report.
Alman Carroll, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I got a question. Um, regarding, um, psychological evaluations, um, is that only done at the time of hire, or is that done periodically throughout employment?
Okay, so there are two conditions where, uh, actually, sorry, three conditions where a psychological evaluation, and I'm gonna throw in therapy as well, because those are two different, uh, two different issues, so, prior to being hired, um, you take a psychological exam. And it's not necessarily a pass/fail psychological exam. The results of the exam actually measure the liability anticipated to the city, low, medium, or high. It does come with a full report as to the explanation as to why. Um, if an employee is involved in a traumatic incident, let's say they're involved in a shooting. The, and I've done this before, I've sent them for psychological examination because it, that serves one purpose, I want to know where they're at psychologically, and I also send them to therapy. Mandated as many sessions as needed, um, until there is, uh, what I consider from the doctor, from the psychologist, uh, from the psych, and the therapist as to whether they're fit for duty to return to work. So there are, there are different sets of conditions aside from the hiring process where a psychological examination and/or therapy would be mandated for an employee.
All right, thank you.
Alman Elliott?
Yes, Chief, um, I want to ask, um, I know we kind of talked about this before. Um, were you going to include, um, the random drug testing in your procedures, uh, for your officers? Or what did you say about the drug testing that you did?
All right, so, um, are you talking about for hiring?
No.
Are you talking about just in general, random? Okay, so, the random drug testing policy is governed by the city, not by the Police Department. So when I brought up, um, discussion about random drug testing, I suggested that the random drug testing policy for all city employees, um, be reviewed and revised, uh, to include, uh, certain things. For example, it does not test for alcohol. Um, it does not test employees, uh, other than the ones who are permitted to drive city vehicles. Um, I, I think there are some losses there if during the random drug testing, if we're not screening randomly all of our employees of the city. Um, instead of, um, just a, uh, certain segment, uh, and only for certain things. Now, mind you, if you know anything about drug testing, um, we can test for whatever we want. It depends on how much you want to pay. So we, I know we test for the standard stuff like methamphetamines and marijuana and so forth, that's very common stuff. Uh, but for some reason, we do not test for alcohol, and I never understood why. So that, that was just my, um, recommendation and suggestion to the board.
Okay, are you aware of the approval, um, for all police to do the, um, implicit and de-escalation training?
Correct.
So is that something that, is it gonna be a particular institution you all go, go to, or would you be able to facilitate that? Um, through someone coming in, what, what is that going to look like that you're aware of?
We've been doing, uh, implicit bias training for years. Uh, it's mandatory once a year. Uh, if not more than that, for example, it may be, um, used as a disciplinary measure, training as, uh, as a form of discipline if we, uh, if we perceive a problem with an employee. But all employees do complete an implicit bias course every year, all commissioned police officers.
Okay.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, good, good evening, everyone.
Evening.
I was asked by the mayor and Alderman Thomas to take a look at the indenture of trust for Sherwood Hills. Since that matter is on the agenda under new business, I will defer any comments that I may have until that time. So I have nothing further at this time, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Family Dollar liquor license. Who's going to address that? Lead the discussion, is Kathy, is Kathy on?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, well, let me just share with, with all of you that, uh, this has been on the agenda for two or three meetings, uh, at, at least. This is an issue that we need to put the risk, either you approve or disapprove, and not allow this to keep lingering on. So, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's on the agenda. Yeah. So, do I, oh, somebody got their hand up?
Yeah, uh, Ms. Bousard is on.
Yes, she's on you.
She's on? Yeah.
Okay, then.
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
All right, then, would you, would you, uh, proceed with that, please?
Okay, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, at the last meeting, um, it was, um, the, um, Family Dollar was on the, um, agenda to be approved. Uh, at the time, I gave my recommendation to move forward and for the board to approve. So at this point in time, um, as the mayor says, it keeps popping up. I have no, nothing further to say. I, um, I said go forward, it has to be approved by the board, so that's where we're at right now. So, uh, if there's a reason why the board is not gonna approve, then someone needs to say something. But at this point, it, I feel it's out of my hands because I've moved it forward. I've sent the email to, um, um, Dr. Avant, um, letting her know that, um, it's been revo, uh, reviewed by, um, attorney Dorothy White Coleman, and, uh, everything's been looked at, and we're ready to move forward. So at this point, it's out of my hands, and I'm moving it forward for the board to approve.
Uh, I'll agree with it.
Um, so my understanding was that we did not approve because there was not a certainty, um, that that process had taken place. So right now, um, Collector, you're saying that everything has been approved, approved, and is, um, has met our ordinances for us to vote on it? Right, as I mentioned last week, um, last meeting, you asked the same question, and I explained to you that it has been reviewed. The ordinances have been looked over. I've, we've turned it over to, um, attorney Dorothy White, to second set of eyes, to get a legal, uh, perspective. Um, everything looks good. She has sent that email, uh, and included me on it to all the, uh, aldermen, all the uh, men and women, and explained her position and said that we're ready to go. So I don't, I'm not exactly sure what the holdup is now, because, um, again, at the last meeting, I said it's been reviewed. If there's something that someone knows that I don't know, based on looking at the ordinances, looking at, uh, talking to the attorney, that someone needs to let me know. But at this point, as I mentioned, we need to move forward, and there needs to be a vote on it. If, uh, if, if it's not gonna be voted on, um, then someone needs to explain why, because it's out of my hands. I give my recommendation, and it has to be approved by the board, and that's where it's at right now. Okay, I didn't, I didn't get a strong recommendation from the last meeting that, that you were confident that it was, had been, uh, approved based on the whole discussion about signing the stuff and reviewing it. The man said he was talking to somebody other than you, so I don't think we had a clear understanding that, um, you had completed your process and was ready for us to move forward, so. I think I did say, let's move forward, so I'm not exactly sure where the disconnect was. And I also sent you an email because you questioned it, um, before the meeting. And I said that, uh, everything was in place, and it's ready to move forward and approved.
Uh, Alman Dale's?
Alderman?
Yeah, uh.
I'm sorry, Alman Dale's?
Uh. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for Family Dollar, and I would like a roll call vote.
Uh, uh, Alman Carroll, is that you?
No, I'm not, I'm not seconding that.
All the woman was second.
I beg pardon.
All the woman where.
What are you doing? I can't hear you.
All the woman was seconded.
Oh, okay, then. Um, in front of the discussion.
I got a discussion.
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, I brought this up at the last board, uh, when the, the first time we talked about this. I don't think that liquor license application is in compliance with state statute. Because the, um, managing officer or whatever is not a resident of St. Louis County. He's a resident of Jefferson County. And unless that's changed, Michael, whatever his name is, I don't know how to pronounce his last name. Unless that's changed, that doesn't comply with state statute. It might comply with our ordinances, but it doesn't comply with state statute. And I, I talked to attorney, uh, White Coleman about that, and, um, I think she verified that that was, that was correct. So moving forward, and I don't think we need to be moving forward with this until Family Dollar designates whatever, the, a, a managing officer who's a resident of St. Louis County.
Uh, yeah, are there any further discussion?
Yes, um, Mayor, I, I have a, uh, a, yes.
Go right here.
May, may I have a comment? Um, I think, I think because we have never asked for individuals to live here in the city, and if a city collector is stating that everything is in order, I think it would be very discriminatory against Family Dollar for us not to vote for that, which would be setting ourselves up for another lawsuit. And I would like for the attorney to comment on that.
Uh, Alman and, uh, Tatlin?
Um, I concur with Alderman Carroll, because even though we don't have it on our bill, our local laws do not supersede state law, and state law does require that that person lives in St. Louis County, or in the jurisdiction where they're asking for licensing. Family Dollar actually is having the same conundrum all across the board, where they're trying to get liquor licenses. Everybody is stating state statute. So they, they are struggling right now because they're trying to put, um, the, add these liquor licenses where they don't have the proper jurisdictions according to state statute. So I, I would concur with, uh, Alderman Carroll that we need to, um, caution and put, uh, pause on this until Family Dollar, um, concurs with the state statute. Then we have to follow whenever the state statute is.
Uh, Alman Elliott?
Thank you, um, that goes back to the, the point that I was making. If all of those things have not been checked, and, and it can be told to us that they have met everything, then we can't move forward. So it's still a hindrance on the part of the process of reviewing, because we shouldn't get here and a alderman has to say it's not meeting state statute. That's the part that has to be done on our behalf. And then we know that it has been done, and then we vote on it. So it shouldn't even be on the agenda for, until that happens, so. Why keep getting on the agenda, I'm not sure. So I'm thinking, Mayor, you putting it on there, because nobody else has requested it.
Um.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, please.
Um, and, um, attorney Dorothy, um, White, uh, if you can, um, correct me, the email was sent out to all the board explaining, um, everything, and, and that piece that, um, she had mentioned. Uh, I'm not gonna go into details with it, but she sent an email, and that, the email was sent, um, several, um, I guess about a month or two ago, and no one has said anything, um, about that. So I'm just kind of confused because it didn't seem like it was an issue. And it was, was it, it was that we could, um, go along with, um, the recommendations, but it wasn't that it was written in stone. So I'm kind of confused that, um, the email was sent out to all of you, and no one, it, it responded, and I was CC'd on it, and no one responded to her email. So, um, and even it was up to that point last month, when the email had went out, and I wasn't even included on it yet. So you guys got the information before me, and again, no one has said anything about it up until now.
Um, if, if I may respond, um.
Yes, please. You may respond.
Uh, that is accurate. Uh, the question that was raised, uh, at the first meeting, I believe, where Family Dollar appeared on the agenda, uh, was addressed on, or about September 30th. Uh, and there is a requirement that the managing officer reside in the same county, town, city, or village as the licensee's premises. Uh, that requirement can be met by designating someone who does reside in the locale in question. Uh, but, Ms. Bousard is correct, the question was addressed some time ago.
All right, uh, and, uh, uh, Alman Carroll?
Um, this, Mayor, this is for, uh, the attorney, um. So has Family Dollar designated a different person that lives in St. Louis County?
I have not, I have not been involved.
Okay. So according, according, uh, well, based on, 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 on your knowledge, then that the application for the liquor license, the Family Dollar liquor license is, is what we received, uh, whatever, the, a month, month and a half ago when this first came before us. And, and Michael, I, I do not know how to pronounce that man's last name. Um, but ever, whoever the managing officer is, is, is not a resident of, of St. Louis County. Is that correct according to your understanding?
Based on the application that I saw, which is the same one that everyone else has, that is correct.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Alman Tatlin?
And I think that's what we were putting forth, because since Family Dollar has not met the criteria that we've asked, he's been present, what, three times? And the criteria hasn't been met. We need to go ahead and vote, since they have not met the criteria. And our vote, keeping that in mind, and get it off the agenda until they then, uh, come into compliance in what's needed. Um, so I think, I thought that's why we're putting it on there, so we can move ahead, because it seems like, uh, we, we gave him all the information each time. And, um, all of the steps have not been met, so I think we need to vote, uh, keep it in mind. Um, it's not a resolved issue, and it does not meet state statute.
Okay, uh, there are several more hands that went up, but we need to bring this discussion to a close and vote it up or down, and so we can move to the next item. Um, so, Alman Reed, your hand is up?
Yeah, so I, I'm sorry, Mayor, I lost track too. Was this motion?
Was this motion um, already seconded?
Yes.
Okay.
We are in discussion now.
So we can't amend it? Okay, so then I guess we have to vote on it and then.
No, it could be amended now, mm-hmm, when it's seconded.
Just vote it up or down and quit messing with the stuff.
Right, I mean, but then let's just go ahead and vote on that one so then we can then do a, do a new motion.
No, I'm saying that it can be amended right now if you want to amend it.
Oliver Reed, uh, I could, I, I'll take it down if you want to make the motion with an amendment.
We need to vote on this one and then come back.
That's not how it works, she can. No, she can amend it right now.
We're discussing it and the next move is to vote up or down.
Mayor, can we, can we uh, just point of order, go ahead and vote on it?
Yeah. Yeah. Who said point of order?
Let's, let's just do a roll call vote, mayor, if you would do that. I did, can we just go ahead and vote?
Just, you're not to vote on, you gotta vote on it now if you're gonna vote. Yeah, that's what she said.
That's clearly what I'm saying.
It's your privilege, it's your privilege to do it. Vote it up or down. And we'll start all over. Roll call.
I'm asking you to call for the roll call vote, mayor. I don't know if you're hearing me clearly or not.
I didn't hear you, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, I apologize for that.
Asked.
I apologize, you want me to get down on my knees and?
No, I do not, I just want you to call for the roll call vote.
Thank you, roll call vote, roll call.
All the woman West. All the woman Reed.
No.
All the woman Tatman.
No.
All the woman Carroll.
Oh.
Alderman Christian.
Yes.
All the woman Avant Elliott.
No.
All the woman Dales.
Yes.
Alderman Thomas.
No.
Uh, six no and two yes, mayor.
Okay, so uh, that's how the motion is, so let's put the rest into something new come up. New business, resolution twenty nine seven.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't get clear, did that motion fail or pass?
It failed. Motion failed.
Okay, thank you.
Allman Thomas.
Alderman Thomas, I'd like to uh, read resolution number twenty, twenty oh seven. A resolution establishing the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors' support to apply for the STP grant, excuse me, for Shepley Road. Whereas the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors, Missouri is an incorporated municipality in Saint Louis County and Shepley Road located in the city and is in need of resurfacing. And whereas City of Belle Fountain Neighbors agrees to move this project forward collaboratively and support it financially upon selection by East, West, Gateway, Moda, and support the project through completion with a tentative schedule end date of twenty twenty five. And whereas the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors recognizes the members of the current board may not maintain their current status as an elected official throughout the duration of the project. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Alder Persons for the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors as follows. Be it further resolved that the Board of Alder Persons of the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors that any elected official who was elected after this resolution is passed honors the project and the financial obligations through to completion as established.
Allman Dales.
I would like to second that for the second reading.
All right, and then second it and uh, and then move to, to the uh, second reading if.
Point of order, mayor, we don't need to do a second reading on a resolution.
Whatever, whatever, all in favor?
Point of order, we're on the discussion right now. We're on the discussion right now.
Discussion.
All right, and then discussion. I see uh, all woman Elliot's hand.
Okay, um, we did not get any um, amended resolutions for that. I know that um, Alderman Thomas was going to make some changes to it. Um, additionally, I had requested um, a quote of expenses to know what the uh, li- line item would be based on what was presented to us last year. And I didn't receive that either. So, uh, we do not have, we only have the original resolution and the language that was there. We did not get a revised one in our packet. And I didn't see um, a quote of the potential expenses that was presented the last time.
Okay, mayor, can, mayor, um, I'm sorry, all the woman, yes, what you have in your packet this time? Those are the revised ones.
Okay.
There was uh, language removed from the initial ones. So these two are the revised ones.
Okay, so it still says um, that future alder people will be responsible. I thought we had talked about that coming off.
Oh, I don't know about that.
Okay, yeah, you wouldn't know. Yeah, um, but I didn't see any quotes for the project to know what our potential uh, budget um, expense would be.
Uh, Allman Thomas.
Yeah, when, yeah, I raised my hand when uh, I believe it was brought up in the last meeting that projects have been approved by previous boards that we are still, that, that we are supporting at this time. I'm not specific of what they are. But I believe in past, in, in the past, this resolution or projects can be voted on prior to another administration. And it's up to that administration to accept that burden or to accept that responsibility on the next administration.
Allman Carroll, uh, all woman Wes.
Uh, yes, um, basically it's saying the resolution states it's the Shepley Project. Can you explain to me exactly what that entails?
It's, it's the, it's the um, it's to rebuild the Shepley Street.
So what do you mean by rebuild?
Re- resurface.
Excuse me, I am speaking to the mayor, please. I would like his response, thank you.
I was just helping.
Uh, mayor, I, but I, I don't want you to help.
Thank you, all the woman Wes.
You're quite welcome, all the man Thomas. Love you. So, um, mayor, uh, what do you mean by rebuild the street?
It's the resurface, it's the resurfaced street because the street is all tore up, that's what it means.
Well, but when you say Shepley Project, uh, it brings to mind just not resurfacing because to me, if that were the case, you would just simply say to resurface the street. But when you say it's a project, uh, to me that uh, entails a little bit more than just resurfacing. In addition to that, I recall when Mr. Robinson first came to the board. Uh, and my question to him was how did you select Shepley? Out of all the streets in Belle Fountain Neighbors and asked him was he a resident? He said no, he was a former resident. But he stated he drives the streets of Belle Fountain Neighbors periodically and this is how he chose Shepley. Well, we've had several alder people as well as residents who have voiced their concern about the condition of their streets in their ward. And so again, I am concerned, number one, with why Shepley was chosen. Number two, uh, looking at the resolution, it's like a blank check giving him a blank check to do whatever he chooses to do whenever he chooses to do it. There is no amount of money uh, for writing the grant. Most of the grants have been closed at this point, uh. And there's some more I really want to ask, but I'll wait until the next board meeting to bring it up again. But uh, I'm just really concerned about uh, this street and just saying that it needs resurfacing because in my opinion again, if that is the case, then the uh, resolution should state resurfacing. So that's my concern, thank you.
Well, it is my understanding that Shepley is on a street left that qualifies for this grant.
And where did you get that information?
I guess the same place you got yours.
No, you don't know where I get my information from. So, you know, it's, it's not time to be smart, I am trying to get some answers.
No, you, you, what you, you, you concerned because I live on Shepley, you've already stated that before. And so the other people live on Shepley other than me.
I am trying to get to.
We represent the total city.
I, I don't need to, uh, what you need to understand is that because you are.
That I live on.
Okay, I tell you what, you just wait on it. Now, I leave it at that.
All woman, all woman Reed.
Thanks, mayor, I guess my, I have three questions. Um, it's like, uh, I guess three statements why I'm not in support of the resolution. It does not say who is going to be heading it up, be responsible for it. It does not say when it will start. And again, it does not say how much it will be for. So if I'm going to hold people accountable for this, which I understand, we do have projects that obviously will go over more than one year. But we need to know how much they will be, we would be obligating the city to and when it would be starting and who would be heading this project up. So that's just, that's my statement, thank you.
Um, Allman Tatman.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay. Uh, what I would like to recommend is for um, all of us, all of my colleagues and all of us to look at past resolutions that were written concerning street projects. And also to look into, we do have a fund where there's still money allotted for street repairs that we have not visited. Uh, that's one of the things we could be working on. And um, if you look at the past resolutions, you won't find dollar amounts. I think it lists on here that it was, was the East, West Gateway. But it seems at this point, uh, the resolution is not going to go through. So I would like to recommend for us to study past resolutions that we have on our books. Look at the language and how they were written and to explore um, the monies that we have from the other grants. And this is the only street that qualifies for this particular grant and we can determine at another time, uh, if we want to um, endorse to this project. But again, look at the other resolutions and we'll find that this, this resolution mirrors those, as well.
Is, uh, is uh, is Clayton Klein on the uh, on the line?
Yes, sir.
Engineer Klein, would you, could you address how these uh, projects have been handled in the past? Is he on there?
Yes, sir, he's muted though.
There we go, um. I've been on for two years and the street projects were already uh, done before I came on. The stuff that's been going on, it's been stuff that MSD has been, uh, or you know, the utilities have been doing. Um, so we'd have to look to see uh, exactly what is needed and then come back and say we want to do X and here's how we'll, we'll proceed with it. But I, I do, I am not aware of how it was done in the past, so I'd have to look that up.
Okay. But, but I believe relu- resolutions is uh, is permission to proceed. It, it does not commit any dollars to anything, just proceed to uh, um, seek grants for the project. Does that make any sense to any of the people who have been on longer than me? Okay, but we do have a motion. Uh, Madam Craig, don't we have a motion on the floor?
Ma- mayor, I got a question.
Sure, speak.
Um, from my understanding, um, the East West Gateway um, provides grants to the feeder streets in Belle Fountain Neighbors, Saint Seire, Shepley, Coburg Lands, um, part of Ashbrook, I believe, th- these are all feeder streets that they um, uh, because the, the buses run on, on, on those feeder streets. So um, they make grants available to municipalities to, to maintain that. And from my, my understanding, and I could be wrong, it's an eighty percent, uh, they, they provide eighty, eighty percent of the funding and, and the city has to come up with uh, uh, twenty percent of the, the, the funding. Um, and just a real quick comment regarding this resolution. I, I, I wouldn't be in favor, and I mentioned this at the last, last board meeting, to commit future board meetings to decisions that we're, we're making tonight.
Uh, Madam Craig, what we are, with the, then we have a motion and a second.
Okay, yes, uh, Thomas read the resolution and Dale seconded.
All right, we'll end discussion, um, call the roll.
All the woman Reed. All the woman Carroll.
No.
All the woman Dales.
Yes.
Alderman Thomas.
Immuded.
Yes.
Alderman Christian.
No.
All the woman West.
Absolutely not.
All the woman Avant Elliott.
No.
Alderman Ta- Alderman Tatman.
Yes.
All the woman Reed.
No.
All right.
Okay, you have five no and three yes.
Okay, let's proceed. Uh, let's see, resolution number two thousand and eight. Saint Louis County Municipal Park Grant. Allman Tatman.
Uh, mayor, I'm gonna acquiesce and not read that, so if someone else wants to read it.
I, I, I didn't understand what you said.
I said I'm gonna acquiesce and not read that if someone else wants to read it.
Okay. So we were just, uh, all wa- all woman Dales.
Well, I read it. A resolution establishing the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors' support to apply for the Saint Louis County Municipal Parks Grant. Whereas the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors, Missouri is an incorporated municipality in Saint Louis County that has parks which serves its residents and surrounding communities. Whereas the park in the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors are in need of major improvement and upgrade to facilitate the use by residents and other city parks. Whereas the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors agrees to move this project forward, forward collaboratively and support it financially upon the selection of the municipal parks, commissions for planning grants and construction grants and support the project through completion of, with tentative schedules end date of twenty twenty-three. And whereas the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors recognize the members of the current board may not maintain their current status as elected officials throughout the duration of the project. Now therefore be resolved the Board of Alder Persons for the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors as it follows. Be it further resolved that the Board of Alder Persons of the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors that any elected official who was elected after this resolution is passed honors the project and the financial obligations through the completion as established.
Is there a second? Uh, all wa- all woman Wes, uh, yeah, Allman Carol.
Allman Carol seconds.
Any further discussion? Allman Carol.
Yeah, I got it, um, the same thing with this resolution, I, 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 I um, I don't agree with that language of holding future boards um, accountable or uh, accountable and, and making them do things that we're deciding uh, to. accountable and, and making them do things that we're deciding, uh, tonight. It might be a totally different board, um, they might get elected because residents are upset about the parks, and, and they're coming on to make that, that, that change, and I don't think it's right to, um, hold them to what we decide tonight.
Alderman Tattler.
Just a question, um, as we pass previous and present resolutions and/or ordinances, we do so in order for those to be standards in our governmental record. So are we now saying that we're not gonna pass any resolution that would be, um, the standard in our governmental record? Which means when the next board, the new, um, board members come aboard, they don't have to adhere to, whereas common practices have been when we pass resolutions and ordinances, those are the set standards that govern, uh, how the city is ran and how the legislative board goes. So I'm, I'm just, I, I don't understand what the consternation is in passing resolutions with language that says if we vote on a resolution, that the next board that comes on would adhere to that resolution. If that's the case, we won't be able to pass any resolutions or any, or it's just the language stating, even though that's a given, is it the language that's the hindrance? Because it states that, because it's a given that it happens anyway? I'm just trying to see.
Alderman Elliott.
My thought is, if it's a barrier by the consensus, it should just been removed, that, that resolves that. When, when is the due date for this, and what parks are the target parks, Mayor? What's the due, due date for the grant, and what are the targets part, um, parks?
We didn't, we didn't target a park.
So, well, why did, why would we be getting a grant without a target park?
Well, pass this resolution don't mean you getting a grant.
I understand that, but I'm asking, what would, what would be the purpose of even trying to go after a grant application if there is not a particular project of interest? And do we, do we have a, a situation where, because we've applied for one recently that we, um, may not be eligible to apply for it again? What, what is your understanding of that? I'm just talking to you, because I'm not, I'm just talking to you.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm not able to explain that to you. It's my understanding that you get in line and apply for these park grants, and you identify projects. Uh, I don't think it's necessary to identify a project, uh, before you make the move to apply.
Okay, but do you know when the application date is for this one?
When is that application date? I don't know.
Okay, no further questions, thank you.
Uh, Alderman Tattler.
Alderman Carroll, she had her hand up before me.
I beg, bud.
Alderman Carroll had his hand raised before I did.
Okay, um, uh, Alderman Carroll.
Um, this is kind of to Alder Woman Avon Elliott's point, um, I think like, um, these, um, this type, like, I'm not, I'm not against these grants, I'm against the language and the resolution. And additionally, um, I think like, the process, what I would like to see is that it's our Parks and Recs Board that, oh, we want to apply for a grant. I know that's not historically how it's been done, but I think we need to, that was one of the recommendations of the parliamentarian, is to like, dole this work out to, um, the commissions and, and committees and stuff like that, so we're not sitting here doing all the work. And I think that our Parks and Rec Board, um, needs to be, as, as the ordinance states, that, uh, they need to be studying the parks and determining what improvements need to be made, and then coming to the board with a recommendation, hey, we wanna do this at Do- Dod- Dodery Park, or whatever that park is, at the very end of the city and stuff like that, and then we apply for the grant. From my understanding, these grants are done every year, and they're due, um, around this time a, a, of the year, I don't think they're done, um, several times throughout the year, I think it's done once a year at this time, too, so.
Cool, take the hand.
Alderman Tattler.
Yeah, I think, um, this resolution, because we have applied for a grant that we lost, because we lost four hundred and forty, four, four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars because we didn't have a proper resolution to go along with that process.
What is she talking about?
So, I'm talking about the park grant that we lost for four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars because it was not a proper resolution that was signed by the mayor. That's what I'm talking about. And so I think if we go through the proper steps, because we just lost that, um, grant, um, that if we go now, start all over, going through the proper steps, and going to the board for us to vote on, and then have the mayor to sign it, that way we'll have proper documentation and won't be, uh, in the threat of losing another grant because of improper documentation and processes.
Alderman West.
Okay, I thought I was muted before, but anyway, thanks for answering the question, Alder Woman. Uh, first of all, resolutions do not have to be signed by the mayor, that's number one. Number two is, is that various grants, uh, have to be approved by MODAT, ADA, et cetera. Uh, nothing has been taken into consideration in regard to this. I agree with Alderman Carroll, uh, a plan has to be developed first, then has to be submitted with all types of documents, and none of this stuff is being done, and we did not lose forty thousand dollars. The City of Belle Fountain Neighbors lost a half a million dollar grant because there are people who kept saying our meeting on August twelfth was an illegal meeting. That's the main reason that grant was lost, and y'all can keep saying whatever it is y'all wanna say, but that's the main reason that was lost. Um, I put up money for that to try to save the city money. So we did not lose anything, Alder Woman West lost one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars because she was trying to save the city money so we could get that outdoor pool up and running. And we decided that, I made it known way back in like April or May, and then everybody had amnesia. Everybody got amnesia, everybody wants to say I have ulterior motives. Well, my motives are to try to make things as best for this city as I possibly can. And everything I have done since I have been on this board, whether you agree with the way I talk or not, or represent myself, has been to improve this city. I don't know how many of you all can make that claim. Anybody can do an event, I do an event. But when you really want to make something done that's best for this city, you vote towards what's best for this city. You don't vote because you're friends with somebody else, you do it because it's what's best for this city. And even if you want to vote for your friend or with your friend, at least do some research first, and stop trying to down people who are really trying to fight for what's best for this city. Thank you.
Alderman Tattler.
That's what they asked the case, and I like that. And, um, I did do research, I have the grant, and I've talked to the person who is the administrator of the grant. The reason why the city lost four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars grant, number one, no legislator has the authority to pay a fee for a consultant or contact with anybody on behalf of the city, number one. Number two, because there was a resolution that was a part of the application process that needed to be signed by the chief operating officer, which is the mayor, and it was not signed. Those were the reasons that were given by the chief operating officer who was over the grant application. So we don't have to belabor this, um, and hopefully, when we apply for another grant, we'll go through the proper processes and procedures, it's just a lining, um, process that we missed. And we just need to get over it and start all over again, again. No legislator has the responsibility or authority to pay for a consultant on behalf of the city. All of the amendments have to be in the packet with the grant. Everything they ask for has to be in there, and the major document was the resolution that needed to be signed by the mayor of the city, and that wasn't in the packet. So I, 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 I'm done.
Alderman Elliott.
Yes, I see that, um, our city engineer indicated that, that grant will open up first round June, um, two thousand and twenty-one, so, um, this is not even relevant at this time. I would like to make a motion to adjourn and to go into closed session per, um, the approval of the agenda to have an end time at nine thirty.
Have a what?
An end time at nine thirty, yes, the agenda has an end time at nine thirty.
Yes.
Uh, let's, it is nine thirty, you're absolutely right. So, is there a second to your motion?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposers?
Opposed.
Okay, we going into closed session?
I want you in attendance for the closed session.
I would like to make a motion to go into closed session for, um, hold on. I'm moving for the board to go into closed session per section sixteen point zero two one three, hiring firing discipline of promoting employees will have to be a roll call vote.
Is there a second? Uh, Alderman, uh, Carroll. All right, any further discussion? Roll call.
Alder Woman Avon Elliott.
Yes.
Alder Woman Dale. Alderman Christian.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Alderman Christian.
No.
Alderman, uh, Thomas.
Yes.
Alderman Carroll.
Yes.
Alder Woman Reed.
Yes.
Alder Woman Tapman.
As I said, probably to go into closed session.
Yes.
Uh, I'm gonna abstain because I'm not gonna be present.
Abstain, okay, Alder Woman West.
Yes.
Okay, all yes and one no, Mayor, and one abstain.
Okay. Uh, good night, public, and, uh, well, hopefully it'll get better.
Okay.
See you next call, thank you all for coming.
Okay, I'm signing off. Uh, Mayor.
Yes.
Can we have a few, like, uh, three minutes?
Uh, yes, yes, we can, I'm not, uh, and, uh, text me the new code for the special, closed session meeting, is the same?
No, it's, it's on your, it's on that paper I gave.
I had it, but I don't see it now.
See, I don't.
Just text it to me.
Uh, okay, let me call someone, could, uh, city attorney? City attorney?
Yes, I'm here.
Do you have that, uh, for the closed session?
Yes, I do.
Can you text it to the mayor, please?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you, I'm about to sign off now, Mayor, so I can get the other one going.
Okay.
All right.